We miss meeting to order. Uh, Rokel.
McKnight, here.
Myers.
Here.
Rohan.
Here.
Vogel.
Here.
Kendr.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Have a comment on agenda item?
None.
Okay. Notice of executive session meeting?
But it really had one today?
No.
We did have one last Wednesday though, did you know? What was the date of that?
Yeah, you're right. We did. We had an executive session last Wednesday, November twenty ninth, at twelve thirty for the purposes of personnel.
Um, approval of minutes, November twenty first, twenty twenty-three?
A second.
Discussion? Rokel.
Knight. Aye. Myers?
Aye.
Rohan?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kendr?
Aye.
Um, communications?
None.
Um, managers report?
Just two items. Uh, for a right to know request update, we've had eighty-nine right to know requests totaling sixty-six hundred dollars in fees. Uh, also, the next update's related to the junior council program. The four are here. Uh, so Rena met with all four on the twenty-seventh, last Monday, for a two-hour orientation to PA local government and the operation of the municipal city government. They each received a binder pre-filled with resources on those topics and to keep their meeting materials in. Exceptions, expectations and responsibilities for the program were reviewed and the junior council people received a tour of the city building, introduced themselves to staff that were available. She said that everyone was very pleasant and eager to get started. Uh, once they are settled in, we'll have another follow-up with them at the staff level.
Um, hello. Glad that you're all here. Do you have anything to say for yourselves? Um, and they start, uh, in January, the first meeting?
Uh, we're thinking the second meeting. The first meeting's mainly organizational. They'll be invited, likely sworn in at that point. Um, but the second meeting is when they'll become fully involved.
And I was talking with Rena today about setting up time. Maybe, um, Gavin, uh, Griffin, who recently won a seat on Titusville City Council, was part of their, um, inaugural, uh, junior council. And he's excited to make time to talk and answer questions. So we'll try to set that up if you want to option.
Which is cool because he's now on city council.
And now he'll be on city council.
And goes to college, correct?
Right, I think he goes to Bear to see if it's.
Mercyhurst.
Mercyhurst, okay.
Mercyhurst is on Titusville City Council. So he went from being a junior council to sitting on council. So it's kind of, you know, it's kind of.
Your future, just kidding. You can take any direction you want. But he can, uh, speak to what the program looked like there and what he got out of it. So hopefully we can set up time for that, that'd be great.
Can we just real quick have them introduce themselves? Is that all right?
Do you guys feel comfortable with introducing yourselves at this moment? Okay. Let's touch it.
Hi, my name is Yella Ramsey.
Hi, you're welcome.
I'm Agatha Crowley.
I'm Tatum Gorni.
Daniel Serby.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Um, so, uh, council subcommittee reports, we did not have a meeting, um, this month because we're budget, you know, meetings. But, um, does anybody have anything that they would like to report on? Um, housing and redevelopment, uh, does not. Um, I mean, except that we're moving forward with the, the Run On Inspection Program, um, as seen. And, uh, what about community engagement?
Um, this is not a housing act thing, but I will say that, uh, Common Roots did receive, uh, neighborhood assistance, uh, program.
Yeah.
Uh, funds to, um, which I think I mentioned last time too. And there's a ceremony for that this Friday. Um, it's kind of unveiling that project at DCD on Saskin Street Homes.
Right.
Sorry.
No, 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 that, that's absolutely housing, right? I mean, not, but, um, so anybody can go and, and see that and they'll see the, um, um, I'm blanking on.
I don't know. You're also going to Homes With InReach, right? That's, a bunch of city staff is going to that?
Yep. I'll, I'll be at Homes With InReach with Peter and Rena, um, later on this week. So, but, uh, okay. Uh, community engagement, do you guys have anything?
Um, uh, we are working on an application. I'm working on an application that I'll circulate and I'll finish, um, probably next week and get it in for a, maybe a small discretionary pot, um, for the junior council. So if you've got ideas that have ICE tag, we don't have a lot of money and you'd have a little bit. Um, maybe if, if we got this, so, um, uh, council gave the blessing for that last time. So I hope to get that in soon. Um, and we had the last, uh, open house for the budget, uh, at the library on the second floor, on the top floor, uh, this Saturday. So all the department heads were there. We had a few members from the public, uh, coke stuffers. And, uh, that, uh, I think it was, it was great. I, I just think, even just personally for me, I feel so much more kind of, I think, in tune with our budget and comfortable with it. I mean, also the elements that have impacted it. We've been at work, you know, all year on. So, um, appreciate staff for, for that. But it was, it was great. Um, I, I think that the structure of that was, was really good and I appreciate staff and department heads for making time on a Saturday to be there and talk to people.
I, I like it because we get to sit with our department heads, right? And, um, talk those things through. So thank you, Mary Ann, and Tim, and, um, everybody for making that happen. Um, finance, does that, is there any updates or anything?
Well, kind of, uh, in the realm of finance and infrastructure, tonight, you're, you're going to be asked to authorize signatures on the local share grant, the market house roof, and for the market street parking garage, uh, for much needed repairs. Remains to be seen. They're very competitive grants, I understand.
That's correct, yes.
But at least city is applying for it.
Thanks, Jim. Um, anything, oh, you said finance and infrastructure. Uh, is there anything else for infrastructure? Um, then we'll move to old business?
Then?
All right, new business. Discussion, ABC appointments.
So included in your packets are two different Excel documents. Um, one is a list of all applicants and what they, the various things that they've applied for. The second is just a breakdown of those more specifically. Each council member who is a liaison to one of the ABCs was emailed the specific applications related to the ABC along with the chair of that ABC and then if there is a staff liaison as well. We're working right now on coordinating interviews. So the question really before council is, would council like to move forward with all of the applicants interviewing those? That's the main question for tonight.
Could you say the question again? So I was looking at the names. I was like, oh.
Would coun, so for all of the applicants, would council want to move forward with interviewing all or making a selection as to who that submitted that you would like to interview?
I think a selection.
Okay. If that does have to be determined tonight, we can narrow it down.
Yeah, I, I, I say a selection. I think there are, you know, I know that we, this is the first time we're having folks reapply for positions. And I think, you know, in some cases, it might make sense to kind of put those folks through an application again or consider new, you know, consider new applicants or something. And others, like new committees or something like it, I don't know. That's one point, um, is to consider who's already serving. And I think the other thing too is some people chose a lot of committees and are they interviewed for everything? Or, or are we selective?
And I don't know how we have, can we eliminate people?
Uh, so by case by case, I would just ask that.
I'm making it a not even, guys, sorry.
If there is an applicant in the set of applications that are emailed to you as the liaison that you would not want to consider for whatever reason, if you could just individually email me and we can sort it out on the back end?
Um, can we get, I mean, and I don't know, but, um, can we get people who are sitting on more than one of these boards, right? Maybe that might help us make that decision, right? If they're already sitting on multiple boards and we can interview new people. You know what I mean, like and get more of a.
Yep.
Right, or whatever. Yeah. Thanks, Mary. Does anybody have any other questions or, uh, or discussion?
So are we talking in terms of having the entire body of council interview applicants or the committees as we did them in the past?
I think it has to. Oh, I, I thought our, our process was.
With the liaison.
Liaisons to do.
The liaison and the, and the head and then a.
The chair.
Yep. The chair and then a, so.
Just note that as you're looking at that, the municipality's planning code does prevent anyone who's serving on the zoning hearing board from serving on another committee.
And I'll also tell you that, uh, currently there are three out of this slate of applicants that serve on a second board, um, or would serve on a second board if appointed. The first one would be Joe Tompkins, uh, who serves on the redevelopment authority currently. Marcia Yoey also serves on the housing. And then Tim Groves serves on that one.
Uh, Mass. Okay, okay, got it.
Right.
So even though those aren't listed on here, like that.
Yeah.
Well, the things I'm liaison for, I'm happy. I, this is great. There's a lot of people that apply.
Yeah, I appreciate that. That's great. It kind of works when there's this whole slate. I mean, you know, there's, there's, there's kind of like a lot to choose from. That's, that's nice. Um, so do you, if, if we did, I mean, I voiced my opinion for a selection. I don't know if other folks feel differently. If we were going to do it that way, would each liaison make the selection for their own?
Okay.
Other folks have thoughts on the selection?
Yeah.
Interviewing everybody?
I'm good with mine. Any of, yeah, whatever. I'm, I'm happy to do all of them or, or make a selection. But I, I don't know. I, I probably will interview them. Cause, so, I mean, the thing that's. Sorry, go. I was, I'm gonna, was just putting my opinion. Yeah.
What's your intent?
Right, right. Like, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that I will probably interview because I don't know, you know, unless I, I have two people that, or one person that's on the same, right? Like this interviewing for two of my boards, I'll interview them once.
Well, and that's, I mean, so that last point speaks to, I think, what I was, what I was going to say, which is that when anyone applies, if they were to be interviewed for more than one, if they apply for four boards, do they have four interviews?
It depends on.
If it's a different liaison, like.
Yes. Yeah.
Is there, okay. Is there a world where that could be simplified?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering about this. Would that be a way of selection that we could go through their whole, you know?
If we just had blocks of time or something where, I don't know, this is why the interviews are happening.
If, I don't know. So let's ask this, Tim, if, if, because we're all liaison, would I be able to sit in on a different, um, ABC?
Interview?
Interview, right? Like, and kind of make that interview.
Besides, we don't have a majority of council.
Okay, because I'm not a liaison on the, oh, okay, sounds good. Okay, I think. And we can figure that out together.
Could, could it be two interviews at once? Right, if it's, if it's, if it's not a majority of council? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, cause if you sat in on someone's interview, were there other questions you wanted to ask that were specific to you?
Oh, I, when, when I said that, I assumed I could ask some questions.
I have a different understanding of sitting in.
Right. I'm assuming, everybody knows I probably wouldn't sit quietly, but, um.
So in order to not violate the sunshine law, we could not have a majority of council, sure, in a meeting where you are deliberating or, um, trying to make a decision regarding an appointment?
Sure, and we don't actually do that, right? Like, we, we don't deliberate. We, um, send our, our choices to Mary Ann and she then adds them up, whatever, you know, um, and then appoints the person for that. So I don't even talk to the, the head of the, you know what I mean, the, the, um,
The chair.
Of that chair of that committee. We all send our stuff in separately.
Right.
So if, you know.
To avoid that, but.
Yeah.
But I, I would just want to make sure that we don't have a majority of council, three members of council.
Like three or four of us, yeah.
Or more coming together in order to have that discussion because that would be an unintentional violation. Could be seen as an unintentional violation of the sunshine law.
Got it. Does anybody have any other questions on?
What?
Go ahead.
I think that two people here on the Mar board that. Right, so I was just, I just want to make sure, so it's currently served, okay. I just want to make sure that.
John and Donna?
Yeah. Great.
And I'll email the liaisons to see how, to work out scheduling and how we're going to move forward.
So, so the way it stands now, we are scheduling independent interviews for each candidate for each committee that they have applied for unless.
We can schedule a block.
Unless council or the chair doesn't necessarily want to interview that person. Right, I mean, we can do, we cannot bring someone in for an interview.
Yeah.
You don't have to interview.
I already feel like there should be an easier way, okay. Um, discussion beautification committee appointment ordinance update.
So the question was posed and I sent an email out to council, um, to try to determine what course of action council wanted to take or consider taking when it came to the beautification committee. Currently, all committee members serve for one-year terms. There are nine members. The ordinance allows it to go up to fifteen members. Um, the committee had asked if it was possible to not have to reappoint yearly. Uh, that could be changed if council elects to do that. It has to be changed via ordinance. The ordinance is included in your packets. There's also a question of, again, currently the beautification submits a slate of applicants that council hasn't previously just accepted rather than go through this interview process like we just discussed. Council could elect to interview the suggested slate of the beautification committee plus any additional beautification applicants that they may receive separately or change the ordinance altogether to remove the beautification from submitting a slate of applicants and go with this traditional appointment policy that council has adopted. Where, remember, you will have a, the chair of the beautification committee as part of the interview process.
I guess just, I think when we did interviews for beautification last time, it was with the chair and staff and myself and it went, went really well and it seemed, it just seems like it would be, it's just like the odd man out kind of. For, for me, from what I've heard from them, it seems like that first thing of having it aligned with the other ABCs would be like smart.
And if they have people that are interested, that they recruit, they can get them too.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah, our committee should be doing that.
So then if council wants to go the route of not having the committee submit a slate, change the ordinance. The next question is, do you want to move forward with staggered appointments? So one, two, three-year terms rather than annual terms where they have to go through the appointment policy again and again? Uh, we did submit that question. Peter submitted that question to the beautification committee to see what their feelings were, if anybody would be willing to volunteer for longer appointments. Did not receive any responses back from the beautification committee. So I guess the, to council, uh, we can try again to solicit input, but at this point, just kind of being a direction on how council would like to move with changing the ordinance.
I think that, that, because it was that snow day thing and I know a lot of them were busy with the mayor, Meval, and the holidays and things. So, yeah, I would be inclined to, um, I, I don't think it's for lack of interest. I think it's just because they couldn't meet to, and they didn't, they never did have a court much before. So, um, I would be inclined to see if we could put that before them. Like, here's why you want to have a staggered. You know, I think it makes so much sense, you know, so someone's always carrying forward.
So would council like us to move forward with the proposed new ordinance that reflects that? Bring that before the beautification committee to get their input? And then bring it before council once we have the input of the beautification committee? Just to keep the process rolling? Beautification committee appointments expire at the end of February.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I wonder, um, uh, are other, well, I've got two questions. First, um, I, I wonder like what the makeup is? Do we have any sense of like how many beautification committee members have been serving more than one year? Versus.
I can go back and look. We do have that on record.
I, I imagine that there, it's not quite like an annual turnover and so there is some kind of practice of serving for more than one.
Wasn't it Peter, the, I think.
There are a ton.
Yeah, the other side of that is like that the people who are appointed are filling slots and it's like, oh, your term's already up and you've ended one meeting. Like, they were there to getting that letter, yeah.
Right. Previous to, uh, like the resignations and to the chairperson moving out of the city and therefore being disqualified and continuing on the committee, the previous, uh, membership that had went down to five, those five members had been serving for multiple years. So I think at least two to three for each of them.
And, and we upped them to what? How many did we, cause they asked for more people? Nine. Okay. Yeah, that's.
But it's, but the ordinance is up to fifteen?
Yeah.
Yep.
Which is insane. That's like a class, that's a lot of people. And hard to get a court, like what is the, why, why fifteen? Do we know?
Peter had made the suggestion that it, the ordinance, while we're changing it, moved from fifteen members to a maximum of nine and a minimum of seven.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, does it make sense to have?
I was going to say five to seven.
Or five to nine? I mean, just given like where they, the numbers that they had had? I don't know. I don't know.
Seven, five, I think. Cause there was a point that they had less, right? Like than they.
But it sounds like they wanted more.
Yeah, no, they definitely did, but there will be, you know what I mean?
I think that they had wanted more members because it was difficult to remove members and they weren't getting folks, just for whatever reason, to attend the meetings. So with the nine, it gave them more options to have that form.
Sure, yeah. Is that all you need from us for this?
Yep.
Sorry, are other, are other authority, like boards like this? Is it or, do they show up? Is it, are they established by, is all of this detail in an ordinance? Or they have bylaws?
Uh, the, the environmental advisory committee is the only other one, I believe, aside from the redevelopment authority, which is its own breed. But the other ones, the street gate, they, they don't have those types of ordinance.
Do we? Why did we put all the details in an ordinance, which is like expensive and harder to change than like bylaws? And does it make sense to, to take out the details that might change over time and stipulate them in bylaws? Do you, do you understand what I'm?
I don't know what, what the intention was when the beautification committee was recreated. That was before me. Um, so wasn't part of those discussions.
And they, they would do their bylaws. We would not. We, we do the ordinance and then did ABCs.
You would likely approve their bylaws. You could add that into the ordinance if you wanted to. I don't think it's a necessity that you do that.
There's really not much in this particular ordinance from a detailed operational perspective. Um, the largest piece is the appointment process, which I think we'll be able to streamline to keep in line with the standard processes.
Sure.
Uh, and for me as well, cause I'm liaison to a few of these committees, is it possible to, um, require that any of these boards, commissions, authorities, have bylaws in the ordinance? So like the ordinance itself wouldn't specify what the bylaws were, but they would demand that they have and maintain bylaws of their choosing?
Tim, yeah, we go ahead. This was wanted, right?
What, what? So not all of these boards have bylaws?
Correct.
And some of them, okay, no, yes. But I'm, I'm just thinking of them as, as we're sitting here in like Massa and Melua and redevelopment authority and housing authority. Those are different kind of than like the beautification.
Correct.
Right.
Those are also established pursuant to various laws. So the.
Sure.
Third-class city housing authority law, the Municipal Authorities Act, whatever it may be.
And again, we can propose an ordinance to council with some staff suggestions on what should be included. And then council can review it and decide if they wanted to change anything or ask about the rationale behind why something was put into the ordinance or left out.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the question I'm just raising is like if, if we make these changes over time to fit how the beautification committee is evolving, like as we are now, it was just established like within the last, I don't know, five years or something, like five or six years. So like to, to do that, you know, every few years is, you have to like advertise this and like pay for that and like it's a, it's a, it is an update to our ordinance. So I just wonder if it makes sense to kind of be more nimble, yeah.
We've actually had beautification committee for more than forty years.
Right, but.
It has gone through different iterations. And about twenty-seven years ago, the beautification committee was, uh, granted the power to self-appoint. Because there were so many people at the time who would want to be on and other people whose circumstances would change. They were like, you know, I, I really don't want it. Rather than have the problems with the length of committee, uh, committee terms, you said become self-appointed, why? Cause they really don't control any finances for the city.
So that was probably where that one-year slate that goes in front of council. Do you think that's where that came from?
Peter, do you, like, do you see there like issues with, like SLAs, um, like with bylaws? And it's like, boy, they, that group there, that group, they need some bylaws. I was just curious what your, or is it just, it's so inconsistent?
Um, I, I think I appreciate bylaws also as, like, I, I, if you want to do things by the book, you have to do, you have to have the book that they reference. So for instance, the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, it says that the planning commission may create the rules to operate their, uh, own meetings. So far, they haven't. And we have so much turnover of new members who are not necessarily professionals and do not have an instructional book and no bylaws, then there, I have observed, there's a lot of open questions. With the beautification committee, for instance, uh, given this. of open questions with the beautification committee, for instance, given this ordinance alone, like when there's a vacancy, because it says up to fifteen members, but there's no minimum, there's no threshold when there's, is it actually a vacancy, or did we just accidentally reduce the number of members in the standing committee? Nobody knows, because there are no bylaws. The, it's then just kind of left up to the chair and those in the leadership to make it up as they go along, so that's what I see. Well, I'm a bureaucrat, I like rules, and I like chapter inversion, everything, the way they have to go along, so I think there's value in it.
Yeah, I guess I just wondered too, if having bylaws for beautification that spell out some of these things puts more kind of control over the committee and the hands of the committee itself, and removes us from the seat of micromanage. I mean, right, like, we're not on this committee, I don't necessarily know what it looks like to have fifteen members or have one-year terms, but I don't know. Maybe we can consider what it would look like to pull out some of the things that might otherwise be spelled out by us, and then there would have to be probably, I guess, then a plan to draft and then apply bylaws. So maybe that's more for you on that, sorry.
We'll work, we'll work on something to present to council.
Does anybody have any other questions? Then discussion twenty twenty-four, meeting dates.
Just wanted to get ahead of this a little bit. Biggest question is, is council interested in keeping their meeting dates on a certain days, the first and third Tuesday of the month in twenty twenty-four?
Yes. Yeah, I think we discussed, and that would be easiest for us and the citizens to communicate it, does anyone else have any issues? I mean, that's the biggest question, or there are other, or there are smaller questions?
So the next question is that, so the first meeting then would be January second. Per third-class city code, the organizational meeting needs to happen on the first Monday in January, that's January first. Building is closed, staff is not here on the first. So would council, we have in the past moved it to January second to do the reorganizational meeting, the board of health meeting, the swearing-in, or would council like to move that to January eighth, which is the following Monday?
I would want to just do that following that, the second, for my schedule.
January second.
Selfishly, so, and then Tim could be here, maybe.
I think the only concern I'd have about the second is, I imagine a lot of staff is going to be out, and it's going to be hard to, I don't know.
It's a possibility, I'll be here, are you going to be here January second?
Well, I'm, sorry.
When's January second, what day of the week?
Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday.
Yeah, I don't see that staff would not be here.
Oh, sorry, I meant like leading up to it, like preparing the packet and doing the announcement, like there's prep work ahead that is like, that's like the week of Christmas, and then I don't know how people are going to be here.
Well, the other question, traditionally, the organizational meeting has occurred in the morning, whatever day we choose. So are we going to continue that tradition?
You're proposing either the second, the evening of the second, or on the eighth in the morning, like we, we have done.
Correct. Staff will be here that week prior to January second.
Just not that Monday.
Correct.
So, so it's not like asking anything cruel to like miserly to.
I'll be here, yeah.
Council package together, okay.
Good enough.
Like not trying to be a grinch, you know what I'm saying?
Right, Ebenezer? It's a payroll weight wall be here.
So I would say just move it to the second, but if, you know, and just, you know, do it.
What time?
I would say in the evening, our normal time, but if everybody.
The meeting's currently scheduled for the second, correct?
For six. Correct, for six PM, is, the question is the reorganizational meeting and the board of health meeting, traditionally those, those are held in the morning, yeah. We could do it at five on the second.
What's the reason for the tradition? Is that in the code, or is it just?
No, that's just, that's just what they've done in the past. Because it's a Monday, it's not.
So again, what time specifically?
They typically don't take long, you'll get the board of health annual report, you'll just approve the minutes from last year's board of health meeting. You'll do the reorganizational meeting, you'll be sworn in, you can swear in the junior council folks at the same time.
And it'd be at night time?
There's a lot of.
I would say five o'clock would probably be okay.
It will be my first day back to work, like five might be hard.
Five fifteen.
Five fifteen?
That's on a Tuesday?
Yeah.
I can do five thirty.
Can we fit all that, can we do that in there?
It shouldn't be, again, it shouldn't be terribly long.
That's for you, five thirty that day?
All right. Yeah, I would just say keep it in line with Tuesday, and do it in the evening, and then the first and third Tuesday.
Right. Five thirty on January second. I imagine we'll talk about this during the reorganizational meeting, but in terms of like subcommittee meetings and study sessions, I don't necessarily have anything super concrete to put forward, but I would maybe, we could rethink them, in particular, the subcommittee meeting structure is, like, do we need it? Jim, I'm coming around to you, Jim, I'm coming around to your way of thinking.
You can't accomplish very much in a fifteen-minute.
Right, so, so I would raise that question maybe for us to think about, and if we wanted to keep either of them in the daytime, I wonder if we could move them to Tuesday as well? Like November, it fell in such a way that we had two meetings a week for two weeks, and that's hard, I don't know, if they could be Tuesdays, they would never fall around the same.
We do, I do plan on having that as a discussion item for the first meeting, the six o'clock meeting on January second, discussion about subcommittees and the study session dates.
Okay, is there, do you have more questions?
Nope, that's it.
For this? Okay, Autumn, did you have more questions?
No.
Question, Larry, Joe? Okay, then we'll move on. Resolution ratifying signatures local share account grant market street parking garage, one million dollars.
Resolution council of city of Meadville requesting a statewide local share account grant in the amount of one million dollars for the market street parking garage.
So move, second?
Discussion?
This is from the local share account grant, this is gambling funds that the state has acquired, dispersed out, the maximum amount you can ask for is one million dollars, there's no match to the funding.
Do we know how much they give out, or how many awards they give?
It varies, you'd guess, I would anticipate it won't be a million.
But we do like. Do all of the new games of skill contribute to this pot? If so, it's bigger, I'm sure.
Actually, that's a separate, that's a separate pot.
State pot, I think. Fair enough, interesting, still got a bigger pot.
Okay, anybody have any other questions?
No.
When would we hear anything?
All depends on the state, it has varied in the past, when we've received notice, we've received LSA monies for Heidi Cooper Park, for example, we asked for a couple hundred thousand for that and received fifty. So it just depends, it can be fall, it could be a different date, depending on how quickly the state gets through them.
Right, okay, okay, roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rohab?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Resolution ratifying signatures local share account grant, NECA market house roof, about three hundred ninety-two thousand.
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville requesting a statewide local share account grant in the amount of three hundred ninety-two thousand four hundred dollars for roof replacement of the Meadville market house.
Motion, second?
Discussion?
Same situation as the previous resolution, I will say that this number has come from the design, from the, thank you, conditions assessment that an architect has done for the roof, prioritizing roof, that's something that needs to be replaced, we have submitted a number of grants for the roof to try to get this done, otherwise there's no funding that we have available to save the market house roof.
Okay, you said we have submitted other grants for this to discuss?
We submitted our grant for it, we are, we did submit CDBV funds, still waiting for some LMI qualifications that need to change before we are eligible to receive that, so we're trying different avenues to receive grant funding for, for the roof.
Have we received any?
No.
So far, okay.
Did we hear, did we, were we denied the ARC funding, or we just haven't heard?
We just haven't heard, yeah.
Because the Appalachian Regional Commission did fund the electric upgrades in the market house, so there's precedent. There's also USDA rural development grant funds out right now that are due at the end of February, when we had several staff members from USDA rural development tour the market house, they were, they were really encouraging submissions, and it can go, I think, towards property, you know, rehab and stuff, so long as it like impacts like a business incubator kind of space, or a space like that, I think that would, we could connect on that, because we do that grant work.
Does anybody have any other questions?
How dire is that?
The architect estimated it needs to be replaced within the next three to five years.
Roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rohab?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Resolution authorized signatures employment agreement, Marianne Manningville?
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville authorizing signatures on an employment agreement for the position of city manager between the city of Meadville and Marianne Manning.
Motion?
Motion?
A second?
Discussion? Roll call.
We're grateful that you're here, and for the work that you do, and you made a lot of, we made a lot of strides this year, so, and a lot of that is due to your work, and so thanks for being our city manager.
I was just going to keep rolling.
Yeah.
I told you to your face, so. Okay, roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rohab?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. So ordinance first and second reading, twenty twenty-four budget, motion for first reading.
Motion?
Second?
Discussion?
So this is the same ordinance that was presented, what that we discussed previously, the only change to it was what was discussed with the study session, with the increased in reserve parking rates, it went from forty to fifty dollars for uncovered parking, fifty to sixty dollars for covered parking. I don't know, Tim, did you have something you wanted to add?
I didn't know if you were just going to add that we made those adjustments to reduce the one-time monies.
So I think in the previous statement to council, we had calculated the deficit being four hundred and fifteen thousand after the healthcare numbers came in, and we, they were finalized, that deficit went down to two hundred and sixty-five thousand. So we were able to reduce the amount of one-time monies that we were going to use to balance the budget, so two hundred thousand is coming from the rate stabilization fund, and sixty-five thousand is coming from forfeitures of defined spending.
By contribution plans, actually fifty thousand, but, you know, but essentially we saved about a hundred forty-six thousand one-time monies that will be shown in the budget that way.
And so that deficit that we're making up, you said the last number was like two hundred and sixty-five thousand, and then just over, in the beginning of the year is one point one million, so, just good job, everyone.
I think some of the confusion is, is the four hundred and fifteen thousand was one of the budgets prior to us adjusting it to be a balanced budget, and so I'm going from the balanced budget that was presented to you to make the adjustments for the final budget. What Marianne was trying to tell you is when the four fifteen, we told you, she was trying to tell you how she got down to the two sixty-five, so that's why it's going to be different what you see in the actual budget adjustments.
Can you say that again, or differently?
Not sure I can say it differently, so.
Okay, maybe just again, then.
At first, we were at four hundred and fifteen thousand, we were going to propose that to you, and then Marianne said, why don't we do a balanced budget? So we worked on different factions of taking one-time monies, reducing what we had originally thought of maybe a one mil tax increase, and got it down to a zero budget that we proposed and showed you. That included a lot of one-time money. When the medical reimbursement came back, that, or I mean, medical premiums come back, along with some adjustments, it wasn't all just savings, we could reduce the one-time monies by a hundred and forty-six thousand, because that's what the proposed budget had, not, not the original budget we were going to propose to you, I don't know if that makes sense.
Okay, I'm going to repeat this back to you, tell me if I get it. So the, so originally, typically we'd be presented a budget that's like, here's a big problem, and over the course of the budget season, it's like solved, but you all presented to us, here's a budget that has suggested solutions in it to get it balanced, and it's gotten even better, right, like things we've even been able to say more.
Yes, that's a better way than I said it.
No, I just, it took some time, okay, yeah, great, well, I'll stand by my words.
It's all good.
Yeah, no, it is wonderful, I'm super proud of adding programs, adding good jobs, adding people, and, right, and giving us to this point, so again, we appreciate you guys doing big things, right, working really, really, really hard to get here, so we appreciate it. All right, roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rohab?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Motion for second reading.
So move, second?
Discussion?
Roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rohab?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Public comment on non-agenda items?
Can I ask a question?
Okay.
This is probably not good, but usually we have a tax ordinance that we pass also for twenty twenty-four, and I don't see it in here, and I don't know that, we're not changing the taxes, but I always thought we had to authorize for twenty twenty-four.
I was thinking you'd do that at the next meeting.
Okay, it doesn't require first and second and a third reading?
I think the tax ordinance is different, I have to take a look, but we can amend the agenda add it, so we'd have to address that later.
So regardless, this is, it'll have to, first and second are going to have to be.
But it would just set the rates, yeah.
It's just the same rates, it's just you gotta set it though, I thought, so I just didn't want us to miss something.
So there would be no harm in, if we had to at that first meeting in January, at the third reading? I mean, is that, would that be an issue, and I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
I wasn't ready for that question, but I will say that the majority of the city operating codes have been amended to allow for adoption of tax resolutions in the event that the tax rates are not changing, you can do it by, you can establish them again by resolution, which wouldn't have the series of readings, so we'll give you that answer, okay?
All right. Thanks, Tim, for bringing that up. Don't because my eyes got really wide right then and I just like, talk about a story.
Talk about a story.
Taxless study. Okay, public comment on non-agenda items? Marianne, did you look at me?
They're not.
Okay, so, sorry, I thought you kind of looked at me before and said no, but I, I got sidetracked.
You don't have to ask, it's just your meeting.
I, yeah, like, I wasn't going to put them on the spot again tonight.
I know, here they are.
So next meeting, when you guys are here, we'll give you a little time if you, if you would like to say anything at the end. Okay, I don't want to put you on the spot again, right? Without letting you know what's going on. But if you do want to say something, you can do that, we're getting ready to do council member statements right now. Is there anything you'd like to say?
I would like to say, thank you for, thank you for inviting us to this and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you guys.
Yeah, that's great. All right, council member statements. I think I start, Gretchen?
I'm going to start with Jim.
Jim, sorry. Is that okay, Jim? I'm sorry.
What?
Did I start with you? Because I, I always started, I couldn't remember which side I started on.
A few things. I'd like to thank Tim, Marianne, the finance staff for all their work on the budget and enabling us to have yet another year without a profit tax increase. These folks are dedicated, did a great job. I'd like to welcome the junior council people. Thank you for your interest in applying. I look forward to us having a great relationship and hopefully mutual learning. And finally, this is a season of peace and goodwill to all. So seasons greetings and Thursday at sundown is the beginning of Hanukkah, so to our friends, happy Hanukkah. That's all.
Gretchen?
Welcome, you guys. Thanks so much. I'm really excited to have you guys here and also thanks staff, I'm going to diddle them on the budget. I really actually learned a lot through the sessions, even if the public turnout was low. It was great to sit and ask questions and also just share questions that I've had from people to be able to just walk up to a department head and ask about everything from EV stations to whatever. I was very inspiring this week to be invited to the Race Street Project. I have to tell you, it was really exciting. It felt like Christmas in terms of people who are investing a lot in the community and believe in, in Meadville and to start like living a, creating a dream that we can all just really appreciate and benefit from. It was really amazing. And I guess just looking ahead, I, I do still want to work, I mean, because we were starting to talk about next year, I still really do want to work towards changing that LST tax and reaching out to PA municipally. So I don't know, maybe we can all talk about like someone serving on that so that we can get some real change. So that would be just a thing that I want to put out there.
I know. I know. Larry?
Yeah, I'd like to thank you guys for signing up for junior city council. I'm looking forward as well to working with you and I think it says a lot about you guys. It's great to see someone your age taking interest in your, your future and the future of our city. And to Tim, Marianne, the staff that you guys, the work you guys have been doing on the budget is just, just amazing. And again, to, you know, my co-committee council here, you know, you guys all in the background are doing things that a lot of people don't see or know about. As I said before, Autumn's, Autumn's in information, how she's always looking, looking for ways. You know, we've got so much talent here and they put it to use and we're seeing the results. You know, our city is growing, it's becoming a better place. So I'd like to thank all you guys for everything that you've done for our city.
Thanks, Larry. Autumn?
Yeah, echo a lot of points. Do really want to underscore the thanks to, to staff for all the work and getting us where we are. I was reflecting the other day that like, usually at this time of year, like budget season is like intense and like gives me a lot of anxiety and like is a lot and it's a lot to bear and it has not felt that way this year. And I think, again, it's in large part to, it's been, we've been working all year to, to make adjustments so that this part of the year isn't like, isn't maybe so intense. And so that's appreciated. I, to the point about the public sessions, the open house sessions not being maybe super well attended, I was making rounds through the library trying to get, you know, folks to come upstairs and someone who like totally would have, you know, under normal, under other circumstances would have come and joined. She was like, well, are you raising my taxes? And I said, no. And she's like, well, then why do I care about the budget? Which is not exactly the spirit that I was hoping for. But, you know, I think, again, I think it is a shared, right? It's like this budget season isn't, doesn't feel quite so, so intense because of your hard work, so thanks. Also want to say thanks to all of the business owners and organizers of Mary Meadville, the Business Lines and the Chamber and all folks that work hard to put that together. It was a lot of fun and town was just bustling on Friday, it was really beautiful. It was, that was really nice and it, this first, for the first year was a two-day event, so there was stuff going on Saturday too, which was, which was neat to see. And this Saturday, there's a night market at the Market House from five to nine, so that'll be bustling again. And shops are open on Sundays, so that is helpful. But just appreciate just the life that is and vibrancy that is downtown right now. Yeah, junior council people, glad that you're here, thanks for being here. All, I didn't mean, I didn't mean to encourage you to be put on the spot, I just, I imagine that there were like questions about anything that we talked about and so I'm willing to stick around a little bit and answer them if you have questions or you have, I think, our contact info and can ask us them. There's no shame in asking questions because a lot of this is done, so understood. But glad you're here and glad to have you soon by our sides in that conversation. And then to Gretchen, to your point about the local service tax, I'm excited to, to jump in to next year and setting priorities for, for council the way we did this year. It was really helpful for me to kind of have that list of, of things that we said in the beginning of the year we wanted to do, so I'm hoping maybe we can, in our reorganizational meeting or something, think about when we want to kind of review the priorities we had for, for this year and look at priorities for twenty twenty-four. That's it.
Thank you, Autumn. Yeah, I, I, I guess I would say everything that everybody has said here, right? I am not surprised on the budget because there's been so much work done and everybody is, you know what I mean, done so much. I am not surprised at how wonderful our town showed on, on Friday because, you know, there's no place I'd rather be, right? Meadville is, is a magical place and it's, it's even better during this holiday, right? Because we get a chance to like just love each other and, and give to each other without having to question each other. So that's, that's like my favorite part. I just, I think we shine when we get to just live in that, right? That radical love that Meadville is all about. And if you don't see it, come on down and, and see it because it's here. And Santa was there and I'm still starstruck, so I just need people to understand that he could be anywhere in the world. I say this and I, it's not a joke, like he could be anywhere in the whole wide world and he chooses to be with us in Meadville the first Friday of December every single year, right? That's a testament of how cool this place is and what a wonderful place it is. So I'm just, I know him now, like, and we're like this, so if anybody needs an intro, like, let me know. I'm just, I'm a huge fan. And, you know.
It's like a stand-up bit.
Right, like Meadville's like a great place and, and I just, I just, at this time, I hope people see it, right? There are times that it gets hard and life is not easy, but Meadville is a great place and we are working to make it so that it works for everybody. And I just appreciate everybody in this room and all of the work that everybody does and everybody on this council. So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So move. Second.
Discussion?